I'm calling the regular city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM on November 7, 2019. Please have some order.
Listen up.
Thank you. Prior to the flag salute, I would like to defer to Councilmember Art who'd like to say a couple of words.
Well, through the courtesy of the Chair, I hope we all reflect on the fact that Monday of next week will be Veterans Day, and we are accounting at the city that law has veterans, so I would simply ask the concurrents of the council in opening our meeting, including the flag salute, and closing our meeting in our honor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well now, starting from the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, due to the republic for which we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you. We're not paying this fee. It has not been assessed within the confines of a legal process. Peter, you should know something about this. I urge the citizens of Dunsmere to refuse to pay it if they shut off our utilities for not paying this fee. The city can be sued and should be. There are federal and state grants and funds available for these kind of necessary infrastructure improvements. We are not the only community in the United States that are facing these types of situations. I urge the city council and the City Hall to get to work and secure these funds rather than continue to act in such an illegal way, and get it together now, please. People are concerned, $400 a year in a town where people make $18,000 to $21,000 a year as an average salary hurts at $400 a year. The process for this was not legal. Make up your own ballot? Get the parcel number on it as a renter? How hard do you think that is? It's pretty hard. This is not a legal process, folks. You need to get an illegal ballot, get an illegal election. In the meantime, speak with Dunsmere, you do not have to pay that fee. Thank you. Do we have any other general comments tonight on items not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. These cameras were not running the entire time, they went on to flash, I don't know why. They started mid, her midtime, so I just thought I'd let you know.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other general public comments tonight on items not on the agenda? Please go for your clock.
Yep.
And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I thank the chairperson and the members of this council for allowing me to address a situation which appears to be an egregious error on the part of the city council.
Do you have your date in here?
No, Davis.
No, Davis?
Yes.
No, Davis?
Correct.
You can't hear me, sir.
Can you speak a little bit, please?
We really would like to know what you have to say.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis.
When I arrived here three years ago, I thought I was just passing through, but instead fell in love with this town and the people in four-legged inhabiting it, so I stayed. As I always have done each time I have taken up residence in a new area, I have kept my eyes and ears open and my mouth shut while observing what makes the area tick. Here I have learned that many of your predecessors have employed a policy of creative finance. While this can be a productive policy when used to the benefit of the majority of the local citizenry, when it instead benefits only a minority at the expense of the majority, then that policy becomes untenable. I have heard from numerous sources here that the city of Dunsmere annually contributes quite a large sum of money to the local airport to ensure its continued operation. Problem: Not only does it lie outside the city limits, it also serves only a minority of Dunsmere residents. In contrast, the local library is within the city limits and serves a majority of Dunsmere residents. Yet the promised funding for it has suddenly been arbitrarily cut in half. As I understand it, a large portion of the funding for the library pays the salary of Karen, the head librarian. Logic would dictate that a funding cut would of necessity reduce the hours of operation and quite possibly make it so it might no longer be cost-effective for Karen to continue working there and doing the amazing work she does for the community. That loss would be catastrophic for us all. So I stand before you this evening, beseeching you to reconsider that decision for the benefit of the majority. I thank the council for your kind attention and respectfully return the floor back to the chairperson.
Thank you. I just want to remind the general public that we will have an item on the budget later in this agenda, so at that time we'll have public comment for that. This general public comment is open for items that are not on the agenda, so if you have an item that is not, that you'd like to address that's not on the agenda, this is your comment. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the general public comment, move into council and staff comments. One of the other things about the blueberries, so for anyone who does have a question about the housing vegetation ordinance that was just passed, and will be ratified from a couple weeks from now. If you have an item in your yard that you use for fruit or anything like that agriculturally, that is exempt from the ordinance as well, so if that's something that could be there. We do understand that the blackberry, some of the blackberries aren't invasive species, so if you are removing that, that's fine, but if it's something that you do use for food, you can keep that in your yard and that's exempt. Moving down, just a really quick thing about the airport, the airport is in city limits and the city owns that airport, just FYI on that, just to correct that confusion. So we'll now move, we are in council and staff comments. I will start with councilmembers tonight, Councilmember Art, do you have any comments for tonight?
Two things, Madam Mayor. One is tomorrow, the Regional Water Action Group is meeting in Dunsmere. This is the umbrella group that oversees grant requests that go to the state for funding, and for the city of Dunsmere, our number-one funding request relates to the intake structure in Mossbury Falls, and we have been laboring through most of this year to make sure that the Department of Water Resources will not only accept our application, but act on it favorably, but the meeting tomorrow, I don't know if you're planning on attending?
Yes.
Will be from 11:00 to 3:00, and I obviously hope that the city and peace engineering is successful because the city, totally respectful of Gene Baker's comments, we still have a ways to go, and there's no way the ratepayers can pay for all the improvements that are needed to our water and sewer system. So I will be there for that. My only other comment is I am disappointed with tonight's agenda. We can't just do one thing at a time. So I had hoped that the weed, empty building ordinance would have been at least on here for discussion. I remind all of this with regard to the blackberry bushes or the blueberry bushes, that the last city manager negotiated a one-year contract with Clemmons that really gave no sort of analysis to what sort of tree trimming services we want, what greenway services we want, and the year will quickly slip by if we don't start at least organizing the community around this new ordinance for doing vegetation management. What is the city going to do? I read the paper Wednesday, yesterday, that one community with a vegetation management ordinance, $500 is the amount they chose to tell people you have to take this seriously. That's the initial stick. But for a low-income community, we need carrots as well, it's a community obligation, and I hope the staff gets through this and gives us a planning scenario sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Councilmember Iset.
First, I'd like to say, okay, there's a craft fair on a Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. The money supports Rotary Backpack Program, it's at the community building, so another thing is, I kind of leased out someone to bounce around, I want to emphasize on that, free dinner, November 21st, is put on by the Community Resource Center, I guess at the high school, at 5:30, free dinner. So that's how we do it. I would like to ask that we could look into what's going on with Mossbury Falls and/our relationship with the railroad. We need to bring them back to the table. I'm starting to get lonely and I want to know what's going on. As far as the 1727, it's moving along, I hope to have lights on that. Just decorated for Christmas, we'll see what happens, but the work's continuing, and if you'd like to make a contribution to the 1727, this, the train's being redone in the Bruce Petty Memorial Friendship Train, that's what it's called. So contact you other name, or Cheryl Petty, or Ron McLeod, to make a contribution, and for those of you that didn't know Bruce Petty, this is a way that you can help the rest of us make him a legend, the man deserves no less. What he's done with trains, scheme, and a lot for the town, somebody told me that railroad of his was about Bruce Petty. This is a way that you can help make that legend, mortify him, and that train, throw a couple bucks in for the pot. Next, I'd like to make a special announcement and commend a cut above there are local tree people. They are bringing down a 20-foot lush Christmas tree, donating it to the city of Dunsmere for Christmas.
Oh, wow.
I've done it a couple years, and I got tired, everybody says Charlie Brown, so I call the tree people, so. And just everybody else, last but not least, it's Memorial Day, the flags will be going up tomorrow morning, they'll fly until, I mean, that's the day they're going up, the vets, sorry. The flags are going up tomorrow morning, they'll fly all the way till Monday, and then on Sunday, the Christmas decorations are going up, and they'll be up throughout the town, give the town that's best given by their land for, and they'll be up until after, we'll take it down to January 30th. So Merry Christmas, everybody, happy holidays. I'm having my operation on Wednesday, you won't see too much of me, but I'll be back.
That's an update on Mossbury Falls. The Trails Association has just recently, I believe in the last week, resent over a packet of letters trying to request a meeting with the regional as well as the Omaha office, and so I drafted a letter as well to send on our stationery with that to try and request those meetings, so we're still trying to get in there, it's a little bit, but.
You're a joke, girl.
And then I did, I did attend the Trails' meeting a couple days ago.
I didn't know how to talk this long.
Yeah. I will, they invited me at the last minute, so.
Thank you.
So yeah, so we are still working on it and trying to get the contacts for that, and urging them to work with us to get the Trail to go through for the safety of the individuals who use them.
That's what it's all about, safety for the people.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryant.
I would most of all just like to thank everyone for attending today. Some of our meetings are more partially attended, and I just want to congratulate you all for participating in your local government. Maybe you have one issue that stands out for you? A lot of issues face our city, and we all love our city, and you guys are an important conduit for information and context for what's going on in our city for all of our citizens, so go out there and tell everyone else what's going on, encourage them to attend and participate in their local government, so thank you. And best wishes, Dave, and your surgery, I hope you recover fast.
No, no.
And I'd like to echo the specific complaint. If there's anything I can do to help, you know.
Basically, find a person to actually talk to.
Thank you. Councilmember Goode.
First of all, I would like to reemphasize the meal on the 21st. I've been working on food insecurity with the Resource Center and with the folks here in town, and this is an opportunity not just to get some turkeys into the hands of families for a special occasion, but it was designed specifically so that we can get the families that do have needs in to be signed up for all the programs, because signing up for the programs is what gets the funding when it comes down to time for funding. For instance, the high schools and the elementary schools are depending on the fact that they need to be able to show a certain number of people are using it, and so that's the reason we decided to put this together the way we did, so that the lure of turkeys and/or hams would pull people in, and we were able to educate them about all the programs that are available, and at the same time get them signed up. So hopefully we can continue this, it was a strong program last year, and hope to do it again this year. With regards to the water and sewer and solid waste, I can't help but respond to the outrageous comments. Prop 218 is a process that very clearly describes exactly how we go through getting the proper authorization to raise rates. For the water, for instance, we went through, I was on a committee that spent, I think, 15 months working on looking at every single dollar, everything that was available. We had open meetings for all but maybe one or two at the beginning, so people, if they wanted to, could have come to that. We had meetings where the whole city was invited to come down, and we spent two hours going over every single digit, over every single reason, and at the end, I believe, we only got like 40 votes protesting, out of the 800 or so that were necessary. The same thing went on with the solid waste and sewer. Again, I was on it, I know for a while, Councilman Kaiser was, then Councilman Art was on there. These rates weren't raised because we just felt like we wanted more money. We recognize that we pay the same rates everybody else does, and so the idea that this is somehow illegal, we went through the process with our attorneys and let you know that other cities in the state right, in the county right now, are using Dunsmere as an example of how to do it right and how to do it legally. The idea that you could turn around and not pay your bill, I would hate to have some family take that advice and end up spending days going through all kinds of troubles without their water. If people want, and want to really address this problem, it's been said before and there is a path forward. The city is unable by law to have special rates for people in need. That is the law. We cannot say, well, this person is below a certain level, so we're going to give them a break. It's against the law. What you can do, though, is that a group of people can get together, get a foundation going, get a 501(c)(3), and as long as it doesn't come from the city, funds can be used to offset that. But the idea that you could just stand up and talk to a lawyer and say, they get to do it right, it's illegal, that's preposterous. Thank you.
City Manager, you have.
I'm glad.
You should.
I want to.
I know. City Manager, you talked, could you maybe talk about the vacancy ordinance first, and Councilmember Art will insert over that, maybe you have.
Yeah, that was the first I've been talking to. So I have been working on it, and the reason it isn't before you tonight is because we're working on tightening up what weed has done to make sure that our ordinance has more teeth.
Teeth are good.
So it will be back, yes, and I'm working full bore on it.
Thank you.
So the other piece that I'd like to bring up is about the next city council meeting in December, I think it's December 5th.
Let's see, this, November, anyway, November 21st.
Yeah, we got November 21st.
First, okay, so two meetings from now, I'll actually be in Tokyo. So.
Not at the expense of ratepayers here.
Of course, it's at the expense of ratepayers here. It's come from bake sales that I've been holding over the last 40 years or so.
So there's a special city manager's meeting in, you know, Tokyo?
No, this is just debauchery with a friend from the military.
So what are you coming back?
It's just that week.
Okay.
So I think we previously discussed possibly having, just because December's a tough month for holidays and everything, I think we might be discussing a special meetings to make those up since we were having a lot of conversations and we have a lot of items to address, so.
Well, this far out, couldn't we just, I don't know, the regular readings?
So technically, if you're following your regular schedule, it's a regular meeting. If it's not on that regular schedule, it has to be listed as a special meeting. But I mean, it doesn't matter, it's just like a switch between a regular and a special, it doesn't change the actual. So yeah, so we'll probably, if it's okay with the council, we'll go over email, because I think, kind of, we're kind of, we'll still be out for that, so, we'll just take care of that over email. Any other comments for tonight?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Art.
Well, I mean, for the benefit of the public and colleagues, that's our last meeting. The mayor, I assume in conjunction with the city manager, did put out a schedule that breeds life into the protocols we all adopted earlier this year, so we will in fact be having agenda review meetings in the off week of when we meet as a city council, and this is very important to me. I am on for what I calibrate as November 23rd. If that changes, please let me know.
We'll do.
Sheriff, your part?
I'm your partner.
Anything else? All right, wonderful. So we'll now move to about any other, I really have just been working on a couple of projects here and there with things that city manager you paused needs help with, and then attending the Trails, they basically told me to take it, that it was happening, so.
Oh, really?
They didn't really tell me either.
Well, see, you drink one of those things, yeah.
Yeah, so I've just been working on a couple of those things and following up, and again, similar to Councilmember Art's, just working with the pre-agendas and trying to make sure things go a little bit more smoothly behind the scenes. Moving to item number six, do we have any committee reports for today?
The airport committee did meet, and we had about five or six different airport members there, pilots there. We spent the majority, if not all, of the time talking about ways to make the airport more self-sustainable. We do have, since we took money from the FAA back in 2018, if nothing else, we have till 2038 a requirement to keep it open. So what we're doing is, we're looking at how to keep the lowest cost down that we can while also working on finding ways to get the $20,000 per se each year that we need to. So we're continuing to work on that. I also want to put out, point out that Monja Teesling-Brian has become a real leader in that effort, she's been working diligently in the office, pulling together all the different pilots, getting to know them, and she's been a real asset, I just wanted to point that out. Other than that, that was the airport committee.
And then real quickly, too, there are minutes for that meeting.
Madam Mayor, maybe you should get together soon?
Well, here again, we're sort of dependent on the mayor and the city manager for the committee structure we agreed to in January, and as far as I know, the finance committee was meeting regularly, now they're not, we'll talk about that later this night, the airport committee meets sporadically, and the other committees we agreed to aren't happening. So I think it's a leadership issue that I hope the mayor and the city manager focus on. You and I can't really start the public committee meeting. Okay?
So one of the things with the Brown Day Committee is you have to have the majority of members present to hold a meeting, and I believe that you have not received any appointment, applications for those positions, I know Julie's been advertising those. One of the things I would advise you to do in the meantime is try and get another person who would be interested in that public works committee, you just need one person to apply and get appointed, and then you'd be able to start meeting on a regular basis.
I think I can do that.
In my understanding, from the charges that we approved for the resolutions, there is a schedule in there, a preferred scheduling that happens, so how often that committee needs, for example, the DPAC meeting is a meeting on a monthly basis, so they are still doing that, so I would advise you to review the resolutions.
Well, it's sort of embarrassing, the committee that needs most regularly doesn't involve us.
That's typically how they're supposed to work, but, so, I would advise you to look back at those, and if you're having issues meeting, just go back to the original resolution charter and say we should be meeting two times a week, and then work with your staff members and city manager's schedules and make sure of what's going on.
Well, as I say, we can't do it without the support of the leadership.
All right. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move into approval of the minutes. Art, is there any discussion on the October 24th, 2019, regular meeting minutes for the city council?
Madam Mayor, there was one I had. It was where I was talking about the April event early on there, you have a down that had to do with Neighborhood Watch. Neighborhood Watch is a component, but I would say not the community building. I forgot to note, do you know where that is now? I'm sorry, I shouldn't mark it before I came here. Yeah, there it is, approximately 200 people attended, and April event is planned for a community building, I would put down, instead of Neighborhood Watch.
Community building?
Community building.
Yeah.
And the Neighborhood Watch is just an element of that.
Is there any other discussion on the minutes from the regular October meeting?
Move it off, true. I make a motion, will we?
Well, you just moved it off, as amended?
As amended, that's true.
All right, so.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Art, second by Councilmember Kaiser, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all those in favor of approving the October 24th, 2019 meeting minutes as amended, please signify to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Move to item nine, public hearing, we do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we'll move into old business, and so we will move to item 10A, which is the possible approval of a 50-50 grant with the Department of Forestry and Dunsmere Fire Department, I believe this was for the radios.
Yes, so we've received a grant for, say, for six new radios to replace radios that are not going to be manufactured beyond this year, they're the same radios that the US Forest Service and CAL FIRE uses, so after this year, everybody's going to be competing for extra parts. Our requirement for the grant is that we pick up half of it, so it's obviously a little over $5,000, and, you know, the safety of our folks on the ground is obviously paramount, and we don't want to be hoping that we can find the right parts and provide those grants.
So the radio's going to be obsolete?
Uh, obsolete.
That's the word obsolete, they're not going to have it.
I believe last time we had requested, she did have to talk about this, and he was provided us a whole letter, a piece of our packet, and my understanding is it cannot be used with F measure A funds, which is a big vehicle funding.
So is it funded then?
This would be coming out of general revenue, is that what you would be correct?
Correct.
But it's not on, it's not budgeted at this point?
No, it's, it's in the current budget.
But it is, that's what I want to.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any other questions before I move into a whole comment, go to the side? Seeing none, we'll open up this up for public comment, if anyone would like to come up and have three minutes to comment on the possible new approval of 50-50 grant with the Department of Forestry and Dunsmere Fire Department to purchase new radios. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, move into councilmember discussion, is there anyone who would like to leave us off?
I'd say we give them the money, we, I don't have a motion, I don't have, but.
What's the resolution number there?
So. Page 13?
13.
What's the number, Julie?
25.
What is it?
25.
25. I make the motion that we adopt resolution 2019-25, and.
Just read the title.
Resolution to the City Council of the City of Dunsmere, approving the Department of Forestry and Fire Protections Agreement, 7FG19030, by Title O. I'll second.
All right, it's moved, motion by Councilmember Kaiser, second by Councilmember Brian, is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all those in favor.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
There you go.
So all those in favor, or will do a roll call vote on the motion to approve Resolution 2019-25, Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye. of Forestry and Fire Protections Agreement, 7FG19030. By title only, I second.
All right, it's moved to motion by Councilmember Kaiser, second by Councilmember Brian. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Um, so all those in favor, or will do a roll call vote on the, the motion to approve resolution 2019 dash, uh, 25. Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Arst.
Aye.
And myself is an aye as well. Motion carries, resolution is approved. So we'll now move on to item number 11A, which is discussion of possible action regarding listed proposed budget cuts to reduce budget deficit. Now we'll open this up to city council.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council. Um, so this is an item that was requested from the last meeting. Um, I'm always open to questions, so please fire away. Um, I'll just do a quick, maybe four minute, five minute discussion of the next couple pages in your agenda packet. So they are a, um, pie chart that shows the general fund expenditures for the fiscal year 1819. So it just, uh, it shows, as you can see, uh, well, or about 50% is law enforcement and fire. Right? So then next up, we got finance and streets and roads. So those are all the departments themselves. So then further down the line.
You should have had a picture, so everybody could actually see this.
Because it's, because it's a great pie chart, is that what you mean?
Yeah, because you did a really good job.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaiser. Uh, so, as of, and so the, now the word, the verbiage down there below, which is, will be the, the crux of everything. All right, so, as of June 30, 19, we had a projected revenue of, or projected reserve, excuse me, of $375,000. So this is my projection of where we are at as of last fiscal year. So as of 6/30/19. So that $375,000 represents about a 25% reserve. Okay, and then looking at standard municipal, um, recommendations, 20, 25% is, is recommended. Okay. So, moving along, the current budget that was approved, finance committee went through it, council went through it, so that budget is essentially overspending or drawing $91,000. Okay, so if you take that $91,000, subtract it from the $375,000, you're going to get that $284,000. So the projection at the end of this fiscal year would be at 6/30/2020. We would have a reserve of 285, or 284,000, which in effect is an 18% reserve.
So can I add something to simplify this?
So, to simplify this, um, when this budget was put together, we had a 25% reserve as opposed to our typical 20% reserve. So when we were talking about this last time, as having a, a budget deficit of just over $80,000, because we had more of a reserve than, um, you know, than we normally would at 20%, we're actually, uh, we just stayed the course, we'd be at 18%.
Does that even the 20?
Hold on. So, um, instead of the 80,000 that we were talking about, to close that gap, to get to 20% for the, uh, 1920 budget, our actual, um, deficit is actually 36,000.
Better.
Does that make sense?
Better, it's better.
It's better. So now we need to talk about, uh, what are some options to get us to 20%?
Uh, a question, please?
Yes.
How do we project forward with the, the two-year that we were concerned with last meeting? Because, um, you know, this is just a synopsis of what we decided, based on our reserves, what we could afford to do for a year pending that election. Um, since we can't hold that election, we have to go out two years, the concern is what we do next year with very limited reserves. Um, you know, we could afford to stay the course and do that, but the very next year, we'd have to make some drastic changes. Am I correct in understanding that?
Correct, yeah.
Well, question I have, well, is if we went into next year with a cautionary tale about community development funding, and with an effort on each of the different areas to work out other opportunities, we could be able to go by without taking a, without re, replicating this particular situation we're in right now, this year, right? Because most of our over, most of our deficit right now is because we carried on with our commitment to the development fund, right?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, that is true.
So, so not to get too much into discussion, uh, because we just started clarifying questions at this point. This is, this is the first of a couple different meetings we requested on this, because this is going to be a multi-meeting item. Uh, and, and we wanted to take the time this meeting, just kind of back up and look at cost savings, just to recover right now. But we are looking to go to the two-year in the next couple of meetings, and also look at a multitude of different things we're going to have to do. Because just cutting costs and just saying, okay, we'll be okay this year, is not going to help in the long run.
I agree.
Uh, so I think there's going to be a number of different recommendations coming after this meeting, depending on, you know, the course of the discussion that we go to after this. You know, again, there, there are kind of three ways we can do this. We can look at getting some of these things off general revenue. Uh, we can look at, uh, which is cost savings, or you can raise overall revenue, or we can cut costs. So I think right now, we're just kind of trying to look at what can we do right now not to put ourselves too far in our reserve, that would make it some worse in the future. Mike, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. But let me be a preamble about 2021. So, um, the way we put these charts together, especially the one that shows administrative costs and contract services, now you can take a look at, you know, what's.
Second pie chart.
Second pie chart, this pie chart.
Page 26.
And so, um, when we're looking at personnel, uh, cost and contract services, you know, utilities, uh, you know, uh, you know, all these things on here, we've got very little wiggle room. Where we have wiggle room is in community promotions. Uh, we have some potential wiggle room in personnel in terms of potentially going to a halftime code enforcement officer. Uh, we could cut back on training, but that doesn't capture a whole lot. Um, so a, a lot of it we're looking at, uh, in, in terms of community promotions, or if we can find some kind of one-off cost. But let's get into 1920 first before we start getting 2021.
There's a parking lot, a children's park, that is 34 grand. No, if anybody has a piece of property and you want to donate to the city for a farm, let us know.
Um, do you want to talk about page 28, or do you want to just take questions on the expenditures?
I think we talk about options first.
Okay.
Is that a lot there?
Sure. So, so that options on page 28 then, is, as Todd mentioned, we're looking at this kind of 36,000 number as pulling back. So instead of spending $91,000 in deficit, we're spending $56,000 in deficit. So where are we going to get this $36,000? So if you just have 36,000 in your mind, it'll be, it'll be somewhat helpful in this scenario. And this is under the overall guise that we're trying to shoot for a 20% reserve. Okay, so remember, we're at an 18%.
So, just stop, I want to be sure everybody understands that.
Dave, do you underst, I mean, I want.
Would you?
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so, so think about this, can you hold on real quick, or you want to go for it, Peter, you want to ask your question?
Well, no, I mean, my obvious criticism is that we reviewed my agenda packet, and here's the staff report, and when it gets to options, I see a big blank here.
Well, I mean, I was talking about options here.
And, and I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that informs the public or the decision makers. I'm, I'm used to option analysis and consequences rather than just an oral presentation.
So on page 28, is what he's talking about, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, we have some options here, but we're always open for more options if you have ideas as well. As council members.
I simply stated.
You have great ideas as well.
You chose 2018, 2019, which was a terrible year for the city of Dunn's here. I think the finance committee agrees on forward-looking two-to-five-year lookout. I don't see a pie chart for revenues.
So again, I'm going to go back to just questions, we're not in discussion yet. Um, so I'm going to go back and see the presentation of the staff report, and then we'll do questions, and then.
Perfect.
As we.
Excellent. So, some options then, so we're, if we're looking at this 36,000 number, uh, there are, essentially, we've got two options, not really options, but just two ideas that are, so the one on the right is the easiest one, it's a halftime code enforcement. If you, if, essentially, if we have a halftime code enforcer, that would get us to this 20% reserve. It saves 36,000 from the full expenditures.
We had that before, obviously, right? That's what our last code enforcement option was, was halftime.
Uh, the previous code enforcer was a halftime, and then that code enforcer resigned, and then, um, knowing some of our reserves and, and revenues and expenditures, previous city manager, Mark, he, um, decided to, you know, weigh his options and, and decided not to hire the code enforcer, which led to the ability for now to not have to overspend. So essentially, the 6/30/19 revenue expenditure report is most likely positive. So most likely more revenues and expenditures.
Okay.
That's preliminary right now. So, thinking of that, but, of course, people like code enforcement, and they want that, so. Uh, so the other option then, as you can see, we've got, uh, I've, I, I make mine, uh, four pages in one page, so I'm a little, I forget what the, the golden rod is.
Golden rod.
Okay, so the golden rod, or the gold, whatever, I don't know what color that is, is to limit community promotions funding. So, that gold section, if you go down below, that is the community promotions funding, uh, as it is now, so the leftmost column is the current budget. So we are budgeted at expending $76,500. So with.
So he, he's right here. So he's talking about, so these are the options that you can look at for this one? So if we limited community promotions funding to $15,925, correct? Is that what you're putting at, or is that the savings we would achieve?
That's the savings you would achieve.
Savings you would achieve, sure.
Okay, so.
Exactly, I gave you shit.
Okay. All right, do you want to continue?
Yeah. Right, so, okay, so then the next column, to the right of budget, is what has been, uh, expended already. So those are money out of our bank account already. So that 42,050 number, already been given out.
So we can cover, in other words.
Good. And, and that's, that's the, the groups requested, granted out the money. We, the standard protocol has been to grant it to expend half current and then half later, and that has to deal with when the revenues come in. Our property tax is our biggest thing, it doesn't come in until December, but that's for another time.
Yeah.
So, we've, we've expended, we've expended that much.
As of the freeze.
As of the freeze, correct.
Right.
Exactly right, very good. All right, so now the next two columns are just arbitrary percentages. So it's a 75%, 80%, it's just for visualization. So, if we reduced it by 75%, so the total amount of community promotions funding.
I'm sorry, reduced it by, or reduced it to?
Okay, reduced it to 75%. Yeah, good.
Wow, 75, ooh.
Yeah, yeah. So reduced it to 75% by 20%. You, we would be expending out 57,375, which is a reduction of 19,125. The next column is the 80%. We would be giving out 80% of what we had already budgeted, and that saves quote-unquote 15,300. So bottom line, the bottom right two numbers, 19, 125 and the 15, 300, those two are closely related to the, now going back up to the upper top-left graph, the 15,925 that I've got in this, uh, 36, as a portion of the 36,000 number, that we are trying to regain, essentially. Okay, so that was kind of the tough one. The next two are very simple. There's some properties that, that city has, potentially liquidate them, that's a $15,000 potential number, and then, uh, Children's Park is, um, not expending the rent at Children's Park. That's, that's the savings there. So those are just three options.
Which then make up 36,000. But be clear, that would shut down Children's Park.
So we, what we would do is we would shut down Children's Park because the rent is continually being raised at that location, to try to force this out to be used as commercial. Well, um, the proposal is, is we would then move the Children's Park to $12 park, and because the equipment out there would not meet ADA requirements, we'd have to wait until next year, when there are park funds available, that if you apply for them, you will get them. It is, you know, it is for you, it's $200,000, and, um, so then we can replace that equipment, and then that park is down there.
And by, and by next year, you basically mean next summer or next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year.
So that would be July?
Yeah.
There's a down, there's money for that park, can that be used?
The dollar-dollary money?
Could dollar-dollary money be used to enhance, uh, especially if you're going to go with the, make the Children's Park, the one thing that. I'll say it, man, you guys want to make the Children's Park right next to the river, we need to take that into consideration.
Yeah, I, I have a bit of skepticism.
Yeah, I got a taste in my mouth. You said the dollar-dollary park, sorry.
So just not to get too far.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Just is there, is there money there that could be used to make a safe spot? Something to look at, because there might be dollar-dollary.
There's lots of discussion in that, in that regard, that is going to get really deep. But the bottom line, that yes, the current Children's Park needs to definitely be looked at and looked at, because it's not got a year on that.
Or could this be, if I can, to get, um, low interest rate financing for purchasing the property it's on? I know that, that was explored some years ago, but, um.
So again, before we move into discussion and all that, this does not have to be a decision made today necessarily, this can be something done over a series of meetings, but I'd like to get back to, I believe you have a fourth option, which is the cutting of code enforcement half, in half, of position.
Right.
So basically, you're, you're presenting us with four options at this point, if we want to achieve.
Well, technically, it's like, I mean, this is basically two options. It's, the first option is, is a combination of community promotions, the property, and Children's Park. So those three things make up the $36,000.
Option two?
So the other option is just the idea of halftime, of halftime to all the other things, that would be option two.
And again, these are just options being presented tonight.
Right, there are infinite numbers of ways that we can slice this. And I know, uh, Councilor Arst will be, um, proposing to cut funds from the airport, from the enterprise fund, and, and backfilling that, but, um, again, that gets us into that position where we've taken FAA money, and, um, if, you know, we stop, uh, maintaining that airport, uh, we're going to get into a position where we have to reconstruct as opposed to maintain, and things get a lot more expensive. And we can't ignore it, or the FAA is going to, you know, paw us over very easily. We're a small community, they're a large federal agency, so I don't know if we're going to test that. Uh, but there, there are infinite choices that we can be looking at, and ways to help us. It depends on how you guys want to slice it.
There's one option that isn't on here.
What?
That option, no, that option is, is to look at it and say that you don't have to get to 18, maybe we get to 19.
Correct. Um, so before we get into discussion, are there any other clarifying questions, Councilmember Arst?
Well, I very much want to hear from the public. But, in your presentation to the staff, you can't use the word "we." And "we" now occurs in the context of the finance committee that didn't really exist. And, of course, I'm mindful of Treasurer Rubino, who really says, uh, the finance committee needs to hand all of these decisions over to the staff. That's the way it's always been, and that's where it needs to be, which I, of course, disagree with. My question to the staff is, what is the criteria you are using in presenting us with options? And, of course, I've heard no recommendation. What you do is orally present anywhere from two to four. What you do is orally present anywhere from two to four to infinite choices that say, here you go, council.
Isn't this discussion?
So, yeah.
No, the question is...
That's actually unfair.
When you make the recommendations to us in the wake of the ill-considered freeze at our last meeting, what are the criteria? Are you looking for a 25% reserve? Is that the most important?
So we think it's just that we're trying to get to 20%.
We've already stated we're trying to get to a 20% reserve.
Correct.
And, what, let me finish. And so what we're trying to do is give you options of things that are actually cuttable, and then it's up to you to make a decision of how, what the direction is that this council wants to go in terms of what we cut.
And why do you not project revenues for the current fiscal year and one or two fiscal years out, as finance agreed to do?
So because we asked at the last meeting to say, we're currently worried for the 6-month projection out right now.
Can I point out something real quick? We've extensively looked at revenue projections, and this is entirely based on the revenue projection that emerged from the finance committee and the council accepted. So this deficit number you're looking at, 91,000, that relative to the reserve we'll get with the cuts up is all based on, I think it was what, 1.5 million total? So somewhere, we have that implicitly in all these numbers. We've been using the same revenue projections that you yourself looked at.
And I totally disagree with.
Okay. Do you have any other clarifying questions before we move into public comment? All right. So I just want to reiterate again tonight, we just, we have a series of recommendations tonight, and we don't have to take any of these tonight. I know one of the things that makes people anxious, and I know that's why we have a lot of people here tonight, is the community promotions funding is frozen. So the sooner we make that decision, the sooner those funds can be unfrozen. And so that's some of the things we're going to be discussing tonight. But I would like to start, open this up for public comment. So feel free to come up, you will have three minutes on this item. And if you could please, like as you're doing, wind up so that we can be orderly going through these, and please state your name.
My name is Mario Ravino, Treasurer City of Dunsmere. I'm very thankful that the mid-council, I'm very thankful the mayor has considered the city finance to be placed on tonight's agenda. Years ago, when I sat where you sat, the council was looking at three rate hikes in water and three in sewer. Many bill players continually addressed city staff over the cost of services. I was in the office signing checks, as you guys. As one such discussion took place, Ms. Julie Israel and Elaine Contral, who worked for the city at the time, offered to me to explain to the citizens why we need the rate hikes. The gal explained to me that she lived on 600 a month income and had children and would be forced from her home. It was very clear to me the weight of the decisions. Council, after spending some time with Blake Michelson, he is not completely certain until we get the audit, but feels Mark Brannigan was able to close the budget deficit of about $100,000 for year 2018-19 to an almost even. That deficit carried into this year would have been devastating as a spiral was being created. Mark carried a heavy burden in bringing the year-end budget. The sheriffs were incredibly unhappy with him over animal control. The citizens were not happy, and the city staff struggled, facing many complaints. The point of this is, in a general law city such as Dunsmere, the form of government is city council-manager organization. The preparation of budget, the administration of the budget is the city manager's purview. City council sees and makes the final decision on the budget. They participate in applying priorities, but it's the managers and the financial managers' job to see if the city remains solvent for council. They are hired by council, and as such, are hired with competent skills to perform this job. If our reserves were spent in this year's deficit, next year we would not have the same luxury. Council, in this time in history, every council person should participate in a deep dive into the city's finances on the finance committee, benefiting them the knowledge they need to make these tough decisions you're looking at tonight. We will need, as Mark Brannigan, Randy Johnson, and Todd, to explain to increase the city's general fund revenues in order to provide the services to citizens that we have become accustomed to. And this doesn't account for many priorities council has for the city. We need to have council persons able to explain the reasons for the city's revenues falling short versus expenditures in a time when revenues have only increased. There are many reasons. There are, have been many cuts to services. So there's a lot of confusion about the products and services we provide. I'm going to wrap up.
One second.
Please, we need to return the finance committee to staff-run meeting. This will allow the staff to do their jobs and keep council informed of financial conditions. This will also allow council input...
Mario, you're going to have to wrap up.
Okay, inside the envelope of financial responsibility.
I have to give everybody equal time.
I know the decisions you're making, they're your decisions.
Thank you. We have your letter, we appreciate it.
Tim Holt?
And I would like to address the freeze that you voted for to one on your last meeting, and also these proposals to reduce the community grants, particularly, of course, with regard to the library, since I'm a longtime library supporter. The council is understandably concerned about this projected $91,000 deficit for this fiscal year. But I want to point out that our library is also faced serious budget challenges. Eight years ago, all of our operating funds were slashed from the county's budget. Forgive me, you know some of this history, but to keep the Dunsmere library going, its supporters backed a series of ballot measures. Finally, on the third try, passing measure P, that increased the local sales tax by one-half percent. This measure put over $100,000 in the city's coffers this past year. The freeze you've placed on community organization grants, money at present you're using to reduce your deficit, was earned by library supporters like myself, going door-to-door and making phone calls to ensure that this measure passed. Over the past three years, the council has seen more and more to try to ignore the direct connection between passage of measure P and the library, and voters' intent in passing measure P. I hope that at least two other council members will join Councilmember Art and come to the understanding that a continuing freeze or reductions in the grant that you already voted on for the library, and let me point out, we agreed to a 10% reduction in our original request to the city. But I hope that at least two other council members will join, Councilmember Art, understanding that a continuing freeze or reduction in the library grant will have serious consequences for the council's ability to pass future tax measures. So you have the possibility down the road of raising, if you do a 1% increase in the TUT, you have the possibility of raising, I think it's safe to say, over $200,000. But in the meantime, you're balancing your budget or proposing to on the back of the library and library supporters. So you have to ask yourselves, with your freeze on the library grant or possibly a substantial reduction of it, who is going to believe you when you tell voters what you intend to do with this next sales tax increase? Thank you.
Teresa Berryman, Shaft Avenue. Tim just took pretty much everything I was going to say. And I've got to tell you, it is extremely upsetting. I voted for measure P, a lot of the other people did too. And I've got to tell you, you people try to put through another measure with a tax again, why should we believe any of you? It's like, I'm just going to vote for it, and nothing against the police, but I've got to tell you, there are other things besides cops and fire that we need to also fund. And I will not vote. And not only that, there's this whole thing with, that whole thing about earmarking that I've been brought up, you know, there's just like, it feels like marketing. The rest of us, we thought that that actually went through when those funds, then you're calling it some weird, weird thing. Now you're not talking about it being a tax. It's a tax. We, Dunsmerians taxed ourselves so that we can have a library, and so that we can have, we can have the pool, and you guys are messing with it, and you're ignoring it, and it's pissing me off. It really is, making me very angry, and I'm not one of this. A lot of people don't want to talk, this is uncomfortable. But I've got to tell you, you're messing with, we're the people. The power is with us, not with you. You were supposed to do our bidding. It's not up to you to make these kinds of decisions and say, oh, we're not going to give the library any funds. I'm a library person, I read. I love the library, there's so much. Do you guys even visit? Have you visited the library? Have you, have you? Have you been in the library? It's a fabulous thing. Karen and Wes and all the other people that, you know, volunteer are fabulous. And I, I've had about enough of this. This is like, you know, we even had to come in. It's like a no-brainer, people. It's not your money to mess with. It's not your money to decide on. I'm not kidding. So knock it off. Stop doing what the feds do. Stop doing what the state is doing, messing with the money. We have, this is local, what, 1,500 people are in this town? And you guys are messing with it, you feel like you have a right to? Well, you don't. I'm telling you, I will not vote, believe me, I don't forget. I will not vote for another measure if you mess with this again. You're balancing your budgets on the library, on the swimming pool, but those are the services we want, we don't give a, you know what? About, about the damn airport. We, none of us. I recognize the million bucks the feds gave, and that you gotta, you gotta do something with it. But I'm not, I'm telling you, stop messing with the people who live here. There's 1,500 people. You, you don't have to do this.
Thank you, that's your turn.
Hi, Stephen Bryan, Director of the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. I was a little sad and disappointed to hear about the freeze on the community-based development funds. The Resource Center does a lot of good work for the community and the citizens of Dunsmere. We do a lot of preventative work, we do education, we provide reading for young children to get them up to speed by third-grade level, which cuts down on jails and how much law enforcement you'll need. Everything that we do is based on community building, strengthening families. We're a long-term solution to all the city's problems. We work directly with these other organizations to build a better community for Dunsmere and its citizens. We were counting on this money, we budgeted it into our programs already. We're already in a scramble for Thanksgiving. I'm worried about what's going to happen for Christmas and our food baskets for that program, our community events that feed a lot of the citizens, and our food pantry, which is very much depleted because of lack of resources. I urge the council to reconsider and unfreeze the funds for the Resource Center to help the citizens of Dunsmere.
My name's Avon, I just moved here last week. And I didn't think I would speak tonight, but caring about this happening with the library forced me to stand up.
Really, could you just speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sorry, oh, yeah. Just get closer. Having a freeze on the library, or, I don't know, it's just like a form of oppression for the people. That's where you get free education. It's really important that the library be here. It is, it is incredibly important to not oppress the people. I don't have much more to say than that, but, I mean, don't let them do this.
And after we've gotten on the item about the possible cost-cutting and different measures to try and keep that reserved, we'll move into council discussion.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
I'd like to point out the situation right here and put it in, I think, a better, more understandable light. There is, I don't believe anybody on this council who has any desire to take any dollar, any penny away from any of these programs. The reason this freeze came into place was just so that we could take a look at the budget, and it was my expectation when I voted on it that tonight we would live the freeze. That's what we're discussing right now. We're not trying to take anything away from anybody. We're struggling as a council to be prudent with our finances, and we're looking at all the options. Because the freeze was on does not mean that we're taking the money back. The other thing I'd like to point out is that the particular measure P was passed as a general tax. Now that means by law that the council cannot be forced into how it spends that money. In order for it to be, so that you could designate it for the library or the pool, you needed to have it be a special tax. Only a special tax can be specific as to what you're going to spend it on. That was the original attempt that was made when they went and looked at this, and they got 60% of the vote roughly. And so the first attempt did not pass. The second attempt passed because it was a general tax. Once again, it got around 60%. Now that doesn't mean that we as a council are going to ignore why this came about. We're all very aware of it, we all live here. But the idea right now is simply is that we're looking at the middle of the year, where are we dollars and cents? And in the middle of that discussion, there was a motion to put a temporary freeze, and that's all we're discussing right now, is how to come out of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome everyone for expressing their opinions. I care deeply about the library as well. And I think these are all the things that are important to Dunsmere. And their beginning and their strength is the volunteers that form the core of these organizations. The city is one form of support to them, and we hope to be in a position to give as much support as possible. I'm looking at this pie chart, I'd just love to share with you guys kind of the reason we're all here. Fire is 20% of the budget, and law enforcement is 30. This summer, we had to cut our hours of law enforcement, and still at 50%. This is just the world we live in, all small towns are kind of in this situation. But the costs of fire and law enforcement are very large relative to our budget. These things need to be funded, they're absolutely essential. We all rely on them, we don't even think about them. Yet they take up a very large proportion. I do understand that community promotions is only 5% of the budget. So the city of Dunsmere needs to find a way, and we've been trying to explore that with the tax we proposed putting on March, but we have to delay until November. But proposing funding these essential things that are 50% of the budget, that frees up a lot of resources to stabilize. But I would just like to say to everyone just concerned about the budget, come with us and explore this general fund and the reserves. If we go and spend the exact amount we said we were, and I agree to it fully myself, I agree with it now, if we were able to raise revenue in a short time. But we're at 18% reserves. That puts us in a position next year, if we spend the same amount, like, where would we be at reserve-wise if we spent another 91,000 plus 3%?
16, 11, I call that, or 11?
We'd be at 11. Getting dangerously close to potentially not even having enough funds to pay some bills because of the timing of funds going in and out. So I would just invite everyone to stay involved. This is not going to be solved tonight. This is probably a couple-year process to figure out how we as a community take care of these huge expenses of law enforcement and fire. Things we, no one's arguing we need fire and law enforcement, and employees do. Well, no one's arguing we need employees too, but they're not as large a portion of the budget as fire and law enforcement. In two and a half years, our law enforcement costs will go up somewhere in the tune of $150,000 per year. We avoided that by cutting, cutting hours this year. That didn't feel comfortable. You know, we talked about not allowing the library closed. You also want law enforcement at any time. And you want strong law enforcement, proactive law enforcement, you know, that's going to patrol and be stewards of our community. So just stay involved, this is not going to be solved tonight or next month even, this is a couple-year process to figure out how we're going to fund these essential programs and give ourselves the room to fund things we also need very, very badly on the community side. Will you mind, gentlemen?
Councilor Cass, do you have any discussion?
Good question, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we plan on resolving this tonight?
We can make a motion tonight, we can table this to the next meeting. I think there is a large anxiety over the current freeze of the community promotions fund that's been voiced tonight, and that's one...
We put, we put a few people in a cross.
Yes. So I think, I think it does behoove us a little bit to try and find... So I think it does be who us a little bit to try and find a little bit of something tonight to be able to unfreeze those.
I would concur with that assessment, however, I would like to, I would still like to continue the conversation.
We will.
With the, with the peoples, but I think that we need to make these pie charts available for anybody who wants to get involved, take a look at, throw out some ideas. We should have these available at City Hall. We should have tonight at least been up there, we're talking about them, we see them, the people need to see them too. Because we sit up there and talk about, you know, educating and enlightening the people, these are ways to do it. I was freaked out when I seen it. Here's a pie chart, cut it in half, bam, half, there's fire, fire and police. Everything else we do is another half. If y'all got some ideas how we can rework this, bring it on. So I would think, I would ask that these would be made up and available at City Hall for anybody that would like to take a look and come back with some ideas, say about this, how about this, because we're open for any options. And y'all sit up there and say, you know, we're messing with money, man, the elections are coming up and if you wanna run for city council and sit up there and make these decisions, be my guest, it ain't easy. They tell us you gotta do this. We're, we're, we only have fifty-two cards in this deck that we're playing this game with. There ain't no extra cards. I got no wild cards. Jokers don't count. So that's what I would say, I would say, I would ask that we would do something about giving some money to these people that we promised them because we do got them in a cross and I realize we're in a cross, but let's educate the people, give them some of these and come back and see what, there might be one genius out there that say, I got the whole-
Yeah. You know, in my, I'd like to propose that we maybe schedule a workshop for all the people interested in community promotions funding, because I'm-
There's a lot of people out there that are smarter than me.
Well, I'm very much interested in what the solution is. Do we fund fully this year with the option that we might not be able to afford anything the next year? Or do we try to spread it out with like a two-year plan and pass that measure to stabilize our finances? I'm very deeply interested in that, appreciate anyone coming and discussing it, but perhaps if we had a workshop with a better format for discussion.
So councilmember Deitch, would you like to support this motion for her?
Well, I was gonna make the motion to kind of set things in place, but I can wait until after Mr. Art.
You can make a motion at the time you'd like.
I would like it. My motion is, is that we fully fund, or we remove the freeze, fully fund the community development program and take that part out of the part where we have the community services officer and fund the community services officer at three-fourths instead of, you know, whatever that difference is.
Half, it's half.
Yeah, no, it's half now, but you're saying one quarter? Well, look at it, we're talking half of that whole green chart.
Let me jump in real quick, we can't necessarily apply it exactly right on like that.
Exactly, that's the second in general.
I get your idea and it's-
If you look at that green column right there, that green column would take us fifty percent.
Without getting too sparring specifics, but if you go more than half-time and then there's added benefits that make it, it won't be the thirty-six number that we're shooting for, but-
Can I ask a opinion from the city manager? What would be the effect of going from full-time to half? Because our private city manager very strongly recommended going to full for the city receiving the full benefit of a code enforcement officer.
So a couple things, we, just in terms of-
Could you go to the microphone?
In terms of just basic semantics, we just posted for a full-time community service officer and we made an offer to that person. I've reached out to the city manager in Malchasta to see if we can share that person. You know, we haven't gotten into discussions, but part of the issue is the benefits and how to share them. We have, you know, we have different setups. But in terms of just effectiveness, we get so many calls on stray dogs and on junk properties and vacant properties that we could employ somebody full-time and more for the next year at minimum and still couldn't get to the backlog of properties that we need to site and fix. And until we fix this stuff, we are not gonna be open for business because people are not gonna wanna locate here because they're going to see that, that we don't take care of our own shop.
So there's a motion on the table, just really quick, there's a motion on the table to remove the freeze on community promotions funding, grant all previously set community promotions funding at a hundred percent and reduce the budget for the community service liaison position. That is on the floor right now. Is there a second to that motion before we get into discussing that motion?
Okay. I want a second to motion, but I wanna know what my repercussions are.
So there's been a motion and a second, so we now can discuss the motion at hand. One of the things that we are doing through the SB two funding grant is that we are doing a fee study for our current applications. And one of the things that hasn't been adequately assessed into each individual application fee is community enforcement, which is an ability for us to make up the other half of the decision within the next year.
Yeah, that sounds a bit like, isn't it? Yeah, in other words, we're gonna be pulling individuals down.
And then that would not be put onto the general fund revenue.
It would not be.
It was not, not through what we're discussing tonight. So that's one of the things I was talking about before, that's a, that's a cost savings by not putting it on general tax revenue and putting it onto the individuals applying for business licenses, because business licenses do need to be policed in some way. It's put onto other types of applications that do need to be checked on as far as compliance with what's been granted to them, without being extricated.
But that's still a big alleviation, you know?
I have a quick question, though, because I'm a little hesitant to move too fast in cutting a position we've already been working very hard on. Do you know if, first of all, has the hiring process gone smoothly? It sounds like it has. And are we in a position now where we have a very valuable person to take care of something that's badly needed in Dunsmer? And would that person potentially leave if it went to half-time or not be interested?
Let me answer that in reverse. I, the person we chose is for a full-time position and that's the kind of work they're looking for. Would they leave? I don't know.
There is a, yeah.
Okay. In terms of the interview process, there was one very clear winner amongst all the candidates. He is the right person in terms of trying to solve problems and not come in and try to strong-arm people and immediately give a ticket. It's about solving problems and working with the community. He's the right guy for the job, but when, you know, when you have folks that will not comply, these people need to be fined and there are a lot of people that are in line to be worked with and eventually, if they do not comply, to be fined.
I'd be willing to amend my motion to take off the part about going half-time and allow us to explore going forward, how we cover this, but I still hold on to the first part of the motion, which is to lift, lift the freeze.
So basically, if we would agree to not make any cuts tonight, we would basically just say, we aren't going to achieve that twenty percent reserve, we would probably end up at about eighteen.
But we can still work between now and then.
Correct.
No, but, I mean, I do encourage you guys, if it were just eighteen, I agree with you, I already agree, we've all agreed on it, at eighteen for this year, it's what it looks like in the next, but, and that's what's driving us here. Eighteen's not unacceptable for a city to get to, especially if we can continue a service in things like the library, the pool, community resource center, so many others. So I do think, I'm in favor of putting off these decisions until we have a discussion of equal depth into next year, because the two, for me, that is the issue. You know, we intended to put a measure forward to the citizens of Dunsmer in March, which would have been able to fund going into the next year for a sales tax increase to cover this stuff. Because we're no law, we're not able to do that by law, we have to wait until a year from this week essentially, and we won't be funded until April after that, it puts ourselves in a position of, you know, we could lose all reserves and then we're talking about Dunsmer not paying basic bills depending on the timing and we can't get that close to it. So for me, I'm fine with the eighteen percent, that's why I voted on it already. It's what we do with the next year that determines our decision-making now. So I feel more comfortable if we spent some time on, okay, if we move forward this way, what does it look like for the next year?
So I have amended my motion.
Are you okay with him amending the motion to take out the reduction in code enforcement?
So yes.
So the motion would then re, if you accept as the person you said?
The Resource Center are gonna get their vote. Yeah, for both of them.
That's currently still a motion, they are fine with it, okay. Councilmember Art, do you have any discussion on the motion at hand, which is to remove the freeze on the community promotions fund and grant all previously set community promotions funding?
That's the motion and the second, it's a clean motion.
Correct. That is what is on, that is what has been motion and up for discussion.
Yeah. I favor that and I have two other motions.
Okay, so there's been a discussion on the motion at hand, anyone else? Seeing that we're moving to, would you like to roll a vote against? Let's do it. All right, we will now vote for motion to remove the community promotions freeze and grant all previously set community promotions funding, as was previously agreed upon. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan?
I'd just like to say that I don't believe in going back and forth. I think that if I vote yes for this now, we'd be back here in a matter of weeks or months discussing the same issue because we haven't, as a community, come together with some consensus on the next few years. So at this time, I'm gonna say no for this, but I'm fully in support of funding these resources. I just think we need to have a deeper conversation about the next couple of years to find a balance, because I think we will be back here. If we give it mine now, it could still be taken away in a second because we haven't developed some fundamentals, so that's my concern.
Right, councilmember Peisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
And myself as an aye, for my motion carries.
The people have been heard.
There you go.
We understand, we still want ideas and we still, look at this now.
We're still, we're still on the item at hand, there's still discussion on, like, a couple of years.
No, no. My second motion, thank you for the vote on the first motion, is to look at page twenty-eight of our agenda and look at what we as a city have done in this fiscal year of poverty. Somehow, arson rec asked for twenty-two-five and the city's already written a check for Somehow, the Chamber of Commerce asked for ten, they've already got six. We're trying to get turkeys and hams for the poor people and the community center's got two goose eggs. I, you know, whether I'm an attorney for the city or one of these groups, I would say the way the funds have been distributed so far is arbitrary and capricious and somewhat outrageous.
I can, I can address that, Peter. The whole idea-
Well, it shouldn't come from the staff, they're the ones that issue the checks.
Well, I believe you're just trying to answer your question, councilmember Deitch.
I know, for instance, with the Resource Center, I've been talking with Mr. Bryan and Mr. Bryan was not aware of the process he had to go through to get the funds. It was nothing to do with the staff, it was because the person who wanted it didn't know how to do it.
Their grant was for food security. Why would he say, we'll give you money?
Yes.
Gentlemen, back to it, we have unfrozen the funding and we have-
So now the motion moves for equitable distribution to all of those we granted money to, not a series of winners and losers.
Okay, there's been a motion to grant community, community funding promotions equitably, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And I also propose, if we're gonna do this, let's go to staff report on, maybe from the finance and city manager. How best to do this? Is it monthly, is it quarterly? Our own funds come in at certain times during the year and it's a complex process. If we're gonna codify how we distribute funds, let's, let's study it and give a best recommendation for it so that everyone knows, hey, you know, you get your funds beginning of the quarter, month, or maybe it's once a year, halfway through the year, something like that. Whatever you guys think is best, just give us the option if we're going to codify it.
So there's a, there's a motion at hand to move to distribute the funding equally. I believe what councilmember Bryan, and there was a second for that, and I believe the discussion immediately at hand is more of developing a more equitable option, which would mean we vote no on this one, because this one is saying evenly.
I'm confused with what we're talking about here.
So councilmember Art has made a motion to, because he doesn't believe that how it's been distributed so far is, has been equal and so he would like to move to distribute funding equally, moving-
What does distribute fund equally mean?
So what, or is it-
Some groups have gotten full funding, some groups have gotten zero.
It's just because they didn't ask, it's not because somebody said, I'll be giving you.
So just moving back, we understand what the situation is now. I think what councilmember Art has motioned, and councilmember Peisler has seconded, is that in the future, we would like it distributed evenly. Councilmember Bryan followed up with a discussion that he would actually like more information from staff as how to equitably do that.
Yeah.
So that, then you would basically vote no on this current motion and then you would just basically make a motion to request more information at the next meeting on October.
Okay.
So that's how you would?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So is there any other discussion on the motion to distribute equally the funding?
That's been said, dude.
Can I just jump in here real quick? So the practice has been that requests come in and they say, do request the money, the disbursements. City, the past has done, has split the amount in half, paying it prior to December, January one, essentially is a good, halfway through the year, and then paying again afterward. And the justification behind that, the reason is that partial tax for property tax money comes in December, mid-December. So it's kind of a cash flow piece.
That makes sense.
So I'm just laying it out there. The, I try and, I try and be reasonable with requests if there are groups that are dire need or some kind of need. So that is a, something that I go through and I look at and most groups, all groups, all the groups are fantastic and will say, yes, please, that's fine, if I didn't have it, I can get it half now and half later. Some are, it's already gone and we need it now. So I can make that determination or you are more than willing to make that determination as councilmembers. So I'm just letting you know the justification behind it.
Why do parts of rec get a hundred percent?
Great question.
Because money comes in from the turkeys.
Great, great, great question. The reason is, they needed it because they had already spent it on the pool.
And that's one third of the turkeys and hams.
Uh, no.
The guys from rec came up and fixed the pool for us and said, you can pay me when you get it. So as soon as he got it, he had to pay the guys. They fixed our pool on faith so our kids could swim. Does that sound clear, Bruce? I'm just saying, you asked why he had to have it, because he gives our-
Well, point being, everybody else, we all realize that the city staff is not determining who gives money, so this is a-
Oh, yes, they are.
Yes, as well. We don't have a system in place, I think it may be fair to everyone, if we develop one that works well at the city finances. And this comes up because we're having to readjust. I think maybe it's important for the city to be able to look at this not on a yearly basis, but on a quarterly. Maybe that's a more effective means of dispersment and a better decision-making.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing that we're moving to vote, all those in favor of moving to distribute the community promotions fund equally throughout the system, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Oppose, abstain? Councilmember Bryan, did you vote?
I voted with a no for not, no, sir.
So it's a three-two motion fails. Would you like to make a motion to request more information on a program to distribute equally?
I'll second it if you do that.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to staff determination on the situation.
I'll second that motion.
So there's a motion to request more information to develop a program to distribute funds more equitably and probably more transparently, I guess, is another way to put it.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion at this point.
Okay.
Well, what?
You did.
Oh, okay, so in favor?
Is there a discussion on requesting more information to develop a program that is more-
I thought it was just like a consensus decree.
Well, like, councilmember Art will-
Does that mean that the staff comes back at our next city council meeting with options for what they believe is fair dispersment?
Equitable, yes.
Next meeting?
Yeah. We've agreed to have budget on every meeting for the next-
I mean, I respect Big Dave and Big Dog's eat first, but all of these nonprofits are trying to plan their budgets, from the library to the botanical garden to the Resource Center. So yeah, congratulations, you got all your money.
Is there any other discussion, discussion on the motion at hand to bring more information back to the next meeting to create an equitable and transparent-
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait a second. Wait, 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 wait.
It's not a fight.
No, 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 no. You know, dude, really? Hey, I got all my money for the block. You asked why you got it, and I would just give you to tell you why. All of a sudden, it's like, "I got all my money. I'm sitting here trying to give Tim his money. I'm trying to give Tim his money." It ain't just, dude, dude.
All right, we will call the question on the motion at hand. Motion to gather information to create an equitable and transparent funding process for community promotions funding. Motion by, uh, councilmember Bryan, signify by councilmember Deutsch. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. 5-0.
And I would like to thank the community promotions funders that are willing to come talk to me and make their requests, and they've all been fantastic, so. Thank you, community promotions funders, for being willing to come and talk to me.
I'd like to make a motion at this point. I was very much in favor of moving this off and having more community input, but in the interest of being prudent with our taxpayer funds and knowing that these issues aren't going away, I think it's our responsibility to cut by a certain percent these community promotions fundings if we're not willing to gather more information. You know, if we're going to disperse starting tomorrow, as you guys have directed, I would be in favor and make a motion to reduce by 25% equally across the board. I wouldn't mind looking into priorities within that, but at the very least, reduce by 25% the funds in there.
So, the motion we had previously was to grant all previously set amounts for community promotions.
It was just on freeze.
Uh, no, it did also include-
Well, I also proposed it, that was my agenda. To reduce by, I mean, I can go with 80%. It's just, we just voted to spend, we're going to have a solution. I'm buying.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's an alternative motion. Can we cut it by 20%? Maybe we can support for that?
I believe there are a ton of motions for it, but is there a second for a cut for 25% of each of the community promotions previously requested? Hearing no second, there's no motion. So, we'll move forward with the full funding at this time with freeze. My understanding, just to follow up really quick, we are going to bring back budget at the next meeting to discuss revenue generation as well as cost savings that we can bring up, because this is still an item.
And this will still be an option, because we have control over the funds? So, it's like we're going back to-
Well, again, we were presented today with four options for cutting costs, and that was what was requested at the last meeting.
And continuing to freeze is not cutting it indefinitely.
Correct, but there was anxiety today, and I think that's what the council responded to for that. So, this is going to still continue to be a conversation to be kind of-
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to do here is simply say that this, the financial issue is still here, and we all need to come together as a community. My concern is that if people feel like their community organizations that they're rashing about are funded, they'll go away, think they're funded, and then, you know, whether it's three months, six months, or a year from now, there'll be another very, very serious discussion where total cuts are on the table again because of necessity, and we'll waste all that time without trying to come up with solutions as a community. That's why I'm in favor of trying to solve it now if we're not willing to give ourselves a few weeks to think about it.
Right.
There's no second, there's no second.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The last motion I wanted to make, I mean, you talked about conversation. The chair of the finance committee talked about conversation. We've talked about workshops. We've had invitations from council members to community members, "Come talk to us", and that's not a very efficient way to do things. So, as a council, with three of us at it for a year, does this fall in the domain of the finance committee? Does this fall in the domain of the staff? Does staff tells us, and we respond? Do we have workshops? For the 12 years I've been at Dunsmere, we've all seen what we've seen. It's been a very poorly run fiscal process that hasn't been a deficit. And I think what we're trying to tell the community is, "Don't lose faith in this. We're going to need your support. We're going to try to raise revenue." How are we going to have this conversation? And I actually thought we were benefited. I'm looking at land for a minute. We have a finance committee with two citizen members. We wasted the whole summer believing, thanks to the last city manager, we'd have a ballot measure in March, and we don't. Now we find out we can't. So, now we're in a panic mode, and we're freezing, and we're unfreezing, but there's organizational and planning work to be done here. So, I would like to refer this back to you, Madam Mayor, and the city manager, and the chair of the finance committee for next steps. Let's stop jerking people around.
Who's jerking people around, sir?
Just really quick, you said you had a motion, or what was it?
The motion is to refer both the revenue and expenditure pictures. I think everybody would like to see what we agreed to in finance, which is a two-year forward-looking budget. The water plant, cannabis revenue, the growing economy. All we've got are expenses and cut, 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 and we need to talk about this in finance.
So, just trying to figure out where you're going with this, because you're going around with-
Well, at the end of the day-
Do you like to have a motion, see review at the next meeting, the proposal for a two-year budget cycle? Is that what you want from?
I would like to refer to the issue of options with the understanding we have between two options, four options, or infinite options to get where we want to go. If you take that on, I would like the finance committee to actually have an agenda, actually have options, actually invite the public, and start having some meaningful discussions.
So, you want, your motion is to refer the options to get to what? You haven't been very clear.
To whatever. We don't even agree on what the objectives are.
Maybe-
20%, 18%?
This is your motion. You can set the objective.
Basically, is to refer cost-cutting options for the current fiscal year to the finance committee, so the finance committee returns to this council with recommendations after we hear public input. That's my motion.
I think that's exactly the role of the finance committee. The reason why we brought this to the city council is it's very important, you know, we need to all be engaged with it, but the two-year budget process and looking more forward in our finances is certainly something the finance committee is interested in doing. It's just a matter of staff availability, you know? Can we pull off a public meeting on these matters in a week such that it could be productive, and then we'll have a meeting the next week? I'm more than willing to do that if the council wants it, if the staff has time.
We have to be real. There's a Randy Johnson, if he read the budget message to all of us in the public, in the current year's budget, there's a whole list of things he encouraged us to consider.
Okay. So, again, just trying to tighten this up so everybody knows what's going on. So, you would like to refer, basically, our budget conversations to your budget expenditure, the options for cost-cutting. Would you like to put revenue generation and cost recovery as well?
I prefer to have you as finance chief. You've done an excellent job as to detailing the agenda for our next finance committee meeting.
Well, we want the amended council to take on this task. I mean, the value I see in it is, we're not going to meet for another two weeks. Finance committee can meet in the week in between, and we could have another conversation with members of the public, and then clarify this together and look at solutions. But I think it should include that next year is the next step for us in making these decisions.
So, just, again, going back to the motion and trying to get it correct. So, it's on the record for Julie. So, it's a motion to refer the option. So, a motion to refer cost-cutting, revenue generating, cost recovery, and the two-year budget preparation to the finance committee.
Can I make it easier? A reference back to, for the finance committee to take on the subject of healthy reserve studies. That's all included in that. How can we maintain the savings we need to function as a city and all the things involved?
Madam Mayor, recommendation, could we get some input from the city manager and finance director how they see this?
So, I just want to really clarify before we even get to that. So, are you saying you don't want budget on the next council meeting, or you would like to keep it? No, I'm just going to clarify math here.
I think we'll have the finance committee between now and the, I think the city council needs to have it on their, or sorry, on their agenda every single time until we have a plan, but the finance committee can come up with recommendations.
Okay, I want to be very clear what's going on here. So, city manager, you asked, do you have any input on the discussion?
Yeah, we can meet before the next, we can meet before the next city council meeting. We've got a limited number of things in front of us. We have a limited number of things that we can cut, cost recovery, and we have a couple ideas on how we can do that. You know, but we're not working with much. So, you know, there's going to be a finite number of things that we're going to be able to discuss, and there are going to be hard choices. That's it. But, yeah, we're willing to have that conversation.
Okay, so it looks like there's staff support for having, you're referring this to at least a finance committee meeting before the next council meeting. So, the motion at hand is to refer the budgetary discussions we've been having, just to make it easier for Julie, and the preparation of the two-year budget to the finance committee in between this meeting and our next council meeting.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Can we also include maybe a workshop section in that meeting? And just talk about now, I don't know if this is-
Yeah, I think at this point, let's stay on the motion at hand.
Yeah, there you go.
And if that, and we can definitely talk about the elaboration.
Well, I'd just say, if we do have this, everyone who's interested in this matter, please attend. Maybe we'll have some more opportunity for sharing discussion there.
Okay, so there's that motion on the table. I'm assuming that's being made by councilmember Bryan and seconded by councilmember Art to refer that to council. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All those in favor of moving the budgetary items to a finance committee meeting between this meeting and the next city council meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
To reiterate really quick, those are public meetings. You are invited to go to those. They are noticed at least 72 hours in advance, but we will try and get a date out and time at least ahead of time. We will have agenda items available at that meeting for each to discuss in depth. It's a little bit less formal than this, so there can be more discussion. When we get to these meetings, we're primarily trying to make decisions. It's a lot harder for us to have those more open discussions, but these subcommittees are more of a place for that. So, I would highly recommend people doing that, as well as, again, what councilmember Kaisler had discussed earlier. You know, it's very easy to come up here and say, "We're not doing your jobs", or it's very easy to be upset about something that's happening. It justifies me upset. But it helps us to do, to be able to accomplish our jobs when, if you have an idea or if you have something that you can help us, we're open to those. And please also reach out to our staff as well. We're here to take that input. Because at this point, it's not going to be one thing that's going to get us to the point where we want to go. It's going to be a series of other things that we need to look at, and cost-cutting is not something we want to do as a first step. We don't like doing that. It's extremely uncomfortable, and it's something we don't want to see for our community promotions accounts and for our organizations. So, please help us, you know, as we go through this process, and we encourage you to bring us those solutions. Councilmember Deutsch, either.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for doing such a good job experiencing this through all this. While we were lost there a couple of times, you got us to the end.
And financing is a very hard topic, and it's not a fun topic, and so, you know, I'm sorry. You have to get paid to do it. We are not paid to be up here at all.
Can we entertain the motion to adjourn? Are we done for this evening?
Well, I know you have a series of future agenda items that you-
No, I'm not even, I'm not even going to raise them.
Okay.
For the obvious reason, it doesn't make much difference. But on the budget issue, we discussed tonight the code enforcement officer. And what I hear from the city manager is he's on the cusp of hiring a code enforcement officer. But the code enforcement position is at risk, depending on what we do with the budget, that he will reduce some portion of the package. And our code enforcement officer is saying, "Thank you."
Not necessarily. There are other options. Again,-
This is why we have to move quickly.
Cost-cutting is one of the three options that you can do. So, one of the things that city manager Uhas has been doing is talking, City Mountcastle cannot afford a full-time. So, city manager Uhas has been talking to them to split the cost and be able to do that.
Also, the city, we as two councilwomen deeply understand sharing, sharing the code enforcement officer.
So, there are other options that will be brought forward to you. When we had discussed this with city staff at the last meeting, we had only talked about cost-cutting. So, there will be more options to you at finance committee. There could be, there's a lot more options to be able to maintain that full-time position.
Well, I think-
Councilmember Art said, "Yeah, the city manager, what are you telling me?"
Yeah, if the guy calls tomorrow, and wants to talk tomorrow, and asks us about the job, what is the answer?
Hire him.
Well, there was an offer out there. He's available to do the process.
And this is just like community funding. We can't operate this way to say yes, no, yes, no.
Correct, and so we are taking measures to do that. City manager Uhas is taking measures. So, we did not cut the full-time position at this point, and there is a discussion for possible other cost-recovery, revenue war cuts. But again, that'll be a discussion you'll be having at the finance committee.
That's why I'm going to reiterate, the only two options we're really leaving on the table at this point are cutting the children's park, which saves us 5,000, and selling an 11-acre parcel of property that somehow only worth 15,000. So, hopefully, so we're not really considering these from what I can gather.
Correct, there are other options that were not presented tonight. But again, at our last meeting, we had only requested cost-cutting measures. So, you have other options that are going to be presented to your finance committee meeting, which includes a couple of other things, so we are, so. Okay, so, if you could just send me future agenda items, I believe there was a motion to adjourn. There are no other items of new business on the agenda for tonight, so.
A second motion.
So, there's been a motion to adjourn, and a second, all those in favor of adjuring tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, people, for agreeing.